At this time, I'm going to recognize Ethan Coltrane, the Minister of Union Grove Church of Christ. He's going to have the invocation for us.
Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with. Lord, I thank you for our beautiful county and how you have and continue to bless our area. Lord, we see your wonder and love all around us in the open acres of farmland to the banks of our rivers and creeks and in the intricate hustle and bustle of our small towns. Thank you, Lord, for the abundance of job opportunities and citizens to fill each position. Lord, I ask that you bless our community and the many law enforcement officers, firefighters, and first responders that work diligently on the front lines to keep our communities safe. Thank you for the healthcare systems and all involved that serve our county so well. Thank you, Lord, for those in education who invest in the lives of each student. May you bless them with wisdom, compassion, and a desire in their hearts to continue to educate and stand upon the morals and faith in which our country was founded upon. Lord, I thank you for our leaders here within this county. May you bless them with vision, with direction, and unity as they serve. May their hearts be guided by truth, selflessness, and good character. I ask, Lord, that you would guide and direct the hearts and minds that will engage in this meeting this afternoon. May camaraderie, compassion, and discernment when seeking what is best for our county always be relied upon. Thank you, Lord, for all of those who give their time and efforts to make our community a better place. May we all continue to seek your truth and love with the love that you have so graciously shown us as we seek to serve one another. It's in the mighty and powerful name of Jesus we pray tonight. Amen.
Thank you, Ethan. Tell my little Carolina girl, go state. This time, I'll call our meeting to order. And I asked Vice Chair Langley if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I will recognize any commissioner that needs to admit that they have a conflict of interest for tonight's meeting. There are none. We go to the approval of the agenda. We need to pull, I'm going to pull item number one, animal control. We're going to have a discussion on that during our budget session. Also going to pull item number four, register deeds discussion. In the month of December, we passed a resolution to table discussion regarding the registered deeds being in compliance for the next six months, and that was approved. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, you're out of order. The board has to vote on individual items to have them removed from the agenda. Chairman cannot pull the agenda. The chairman cannot change the agenda. The board can change the agenda.
Okay. It should have never been placed on the agenda because in December, we had a motion to table the discussion. It's in our policy for the next six months. So it should have never made it to the agenda.
Well, what about the first item that you put up?
Okay, I'm pulling that because we had a call this afternoon concerning animal control, and the question that I had relates to the budget. So we're going to talk about that during the budget process. So I'm pulling that myself.
I don't think you can pull that. The board has to vote to remove an item from the agenda. It is a published agenda that's been advertised to the public as required by law. No one commissioner can pull an item without, if there's an objection on the board. And I'm objecting.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pull item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. On the registered deeds, I make a motion that we pull that based on the fact that it was voted on in December, and we have a six-month moratorium on that. Is there a second?
I believe there's, okay, you make the second, then we'll have some discussion.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Okay, discussion.
We have a situation with registered deeds that involves violating county ordinance.
No, no, no. You're getting into the discussion. You're getting into the discussion, and we've been there, and we've talked about that.
What I'm saying is you're supporting illegal behavior of a public official.
No, you could say whatever you want to, but that's misinformation, and you're just, okay?
It's not misinformation. It's not misinformation. It's not for you to decide what's misinformation. You're not Facebook.
I'm telling you, it's misinformation, okay? Anybody else anything to say? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Now, can I get a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. We go down to items for presentation. Our Human Resource Director, Delores.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two Beaufort County employees here tonight that we'd like to acknowledge for their service to Beaufort County. Mr. Christopher Lee from the Sheriff's Office. And Christopher has five years of service. And Ms. Abby Williams with the Department of Social Services, who has 15 years of I'd also like to acknowledge a couple of other employees that could not be here tonight. Ms. Les Harris from Beaufort County Social Services with five years of service, and Octavia Faison with the Department of Social Services with 20 years of service.
Thank you very much. We're down to public comments, and the first one, Mr. Carney.
Gentlemen, I appeared before you this past November with an issue that I think deserves your consideration and for you to look at, and that is those patients in our emergency room that cannot get transportation out when they have finished their treatment. My wife, as I told you previously, spent more than 12 hours trying to find a unit that would come up there, pick her up, and take her home because I live on Piling. And I've been through this. But that was in November that I first brought this issue to your attention. I came back in December and brought it back to you. I hadn't heard from anybody. At that time, I said, I think that I deserve an answer. Mr. Walker said, you'll get an answer. Well, that's been 90 days. I don't know how long it takes to develop an answer, but I would certainly appreciate it if you could give us one. This is a simple issue. If you can identify and what the requirements are that you expect a person to have to do this transport, bring these, let these people that have the capability in the county submit a request for proposal. And then, all you got to do is post whoever the company is on the wall up there, and then that nurse can call that unit and have them come up there and pick you up. Look, I mentioned before, I'm 80 something years old, but I'm still vertical, and I can still think and reason. It's unreasonable to have that situation to exist, and it's unreasonable for me to have to come up here three times and bring it to your attention. And you told me you'd give me an answer, and I expect one. And you told me there's no dialogue. You know, I can't imagine how you can understand an issue without questioning the petitioner. You sit there like a stump on a log. Don't ask any questions. To me, that implies you don't have any interest in the subject matter. Now, do you go back after this thing's over and debate it? Do you look at it? Do you think about it? Do you address the issue that the citizen presented to you? This is the dumbest thing I've ever seen. I come up here, I drive 30 miles to bring this to your attention. You tell me you're going to get me an answer. You don't. You don't debate it. You don't take any notes. I don't know whether you answer these people that come up here or not. Most of them come up here, and it's like standing on the edge of the Grand Canyon and yelling out into space. You don't get anything back. It makes no sense to me. But if you told me I'd get an answer, I expect one. Thank you.
I'm going to come back to you after. We've got one more speaker. Patricia.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to address the proposed increase in homeowners' insurance and how this would affect the Beaufort County taxpayers. At this point, we're facing a 17% inflation rate, 8% mortgage rates, 25% interest on credit cards, a 4.5% cost of groceries in December alone. Heating your home has doubled in the past month. The price of gas continues to be $1.26 greater than it was four years ago. In order to buy a middle-class income home, the household income needs to be $120,000. That is an estimate by economists. $120,000 far exceeds middle income. I'm asking the county commissioners to pass a resolution and forward this with a letter to the Insurance Commission indicating opposition to any increase in insurance rates. One of the proposed requests for an increase in insurance in Beaufort County is 42%. A 42% increase in homeowners' insurance will certainly cause a drastic change in a person's ability to own a home, pay their bills, and this type of insurance rate would even be passed on to individuals that rent their homes. So again, I'm asking the county commission to forward a resolution and a letter in opposition to any increase in homeowners' insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going back to Mr. Carney, I was under the impression, you were at the last meeting, and I saw you talking to Mr. Newkirk, and I didn't, I made the assumption that he was answering some of your questions, and you're shaking your head no.
Well, Mr. Newkirk came, he phoned me a week ago because I think he was afraid I was coming up here again. I hadn't heard from him in a month. So he called, and he said, they don't have the ability to do that in his organization. I have his card in my pocket. The Office of Emergency Services, they don't have the, they don't have the ability to do that. They don't have the will to do that, not the will to do it, but they don't have the charge to do it, if you will.
I was under the impression, Brian and Chris, that there are people out there that will pick them up, patient, or say a patient, a person that's in the emergency room and take them home.
So, Mr. Chairman, the county currently provides emergency 911 services only under ambulance. You do franchise non-emergency transports in this county, and those non-emergency transports are the ones that move patients from wherever to wherever. Those are registered with you, with the board. They come in and apply for franchise ordinance, and you grant that. I can't tell you the number, off the top of my head, of the number of companies that provide that service, but there are multiple ones in the county. It's my understanding that the hospital has a list of those, and they work with patients to provide those to them. I haven't had that opportunity to have to deal with that, but that's my understanding, that it's a hospital function, that they do that. The county at this point in time is not in the non-emergency transport business. You have made that clear to us, that we're not in that business. So we don't have the ability to do that. And I believe Mr. Newkirk had a conversation with Mr. Carney regarding all that.
You know, I'm not 16 anymore. I hate to keep harping on this 80 something, but there's very few of us that are of my age that can still articulate their feelings with respect to some of the things that they run into. So I feel that I've been blessed with a healthy life. But I came here from Atlanta, which is a metro area, and you can get anything there, okay? Now, here, see, my wife had surgery, and they need to get her out. It's midnight.
Yeah, let me ask you, did they provide you a list with people that could take you home?
No, they didn't even have a list. They did not have a list. See, that's the problem. They didn't have a list. They called, and said, well, I think we can get this one. This started at 11:00 PM. I think, well, let's call this one, let's call this one. 4 o'clock in the morning, found somebody, said, well, he said he might be available at 6 o'clock. Well, at 11 o'clock, they're still trying to find somebody. Well, if we had designated, if we developed a description of the service that we won't perform, we could then ask these people that are out there in private enterprise, would you be interested in providing this service on call? You know, just like calling 911.
And we have that, according to our manager. I don't know what happened at the hospital, but they...
Well, they don't have it. I'm here to tell you, brother, in my experience, maybe I was unique in a time of the day. But that, if there should be, there in that emergency room, there should be a sign up there that says outpatient transportation Ralph Carries Shaw, and a number where they can call him, and Ralph will come up there. They shouldn't have to go down a list and call people, you know.
So I don't...
And if you get sick, brother...
So I don't work for the hospital, and they do that. So it's my understanding they have case managers that work through that, whether it's that or whether it's home health care or those kind of things. We can certainly reach out to the hospital and ask them and try to help make sure that that's a little better facilitated, but it's not a county function that we do that. And I understand the desire you have for that, but we do have a franchise ordinance where anybody who meets the criteria of transporting patients can come to the Board of Commissioners and say, I want to be in that business. And the board says, okay, you're fine. They're authorized to then operate in Beaufort County to transport patients back and forth. But we, as a county, only provide emergency 911 transport.
Well, I made my best shot.
Okay, hold on a minute. Chris, have you got anything that you want to add before we move on the agenda?
I got a question, Chris. Randy, cut it off. Cut it off.
As mentioned, I had the opportunity to speak one-on-one in our last commissioner's meeting, in which, lucky, he had my phone about a week, maybe two weeks ago. So yes, as Man was saying, we do have those franchises. You as a board approve those. There are 11 of those approved agencies in the county. And as we discussed on the phone, the specifics of how the hospital manages those operations and contacts those, I don't know those details. I'd be happy to look into it, but I don't know the process that they go through to identify this particular transport service for your particular need, but would love to help you get to the bottom of it. So that's where we are from the county perspective.
One more comment, and then we're going to move on.
Okay, yeah. And I appreciate the time.
Yes, sir.
But I was, as I said before, I work for Lockheed Martin, aircraft industry, and you have all sorts of problems coming in through the engineering groups, okay? And just like the county surveyor, you know, you get into problems. And I never will forget, I was in a meeting one time, and these people were corporate presidents, you know, vice presidents, whatever. One of them said, the first thing you have to do is identify the problem. We've identified the problem, but we don't have a solution. And what we're saying is, those people up at the hospital are not doing their job. They're not keeping that list current. How often do they test it to see if it works? If they call us guys. See, now, that cost me 300 bucks, but that's not a problem. The problem is that there are people that are sick that are still going home, have finished their treatment, but they're still sick, and they need transport out, and it's a problem, brother. And it's not a problem if it's Brian's the one that's in there. You know, that's Brian's problem. But now, when Frankie gets in there, Frankie says, man, this is a problem. It's like a lot of other things. It's not anything of concern until it hits you.
Well, give us the opportunity...
I will.
For Chris and Brian to touch bases with the hospital.
But I don't have, see, I stay at home, I mind my own business, I pay my taxes, and I try to be a good American citizen. And I believe in this country, and I believe in the Constitution, and I mind my own business. But my wife is doing better, I'm doing better, but I'm here because there's a little old quote that hangs out there that says, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And I don't need the government to tell me that. I don't need anybody. You know, I just, this is something that will impact a lot of people, and it could get you. And it's not a lot of fun to sit up there with somebody that's sick for 12 hours waiting on damage. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it very much, and I hope you will look into this and see if you can reach us a solution.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, we're going to go down to...
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. I have something to say on this matter. I'm a member of this board.
Cutting the discussion off.
No, it's not up to you to do that.
This is during the public comment, and we were trying to clarify...
It is not up to you to cut off discussion. I have a right to speak as a commissioner whenever I would like.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to speak right over top of you. We have an individual, an appointee of the county, who is on the hospital advisory board. Why don't we ask that person, as on the advisory board, to go to the hospital and see what can be done about resolving this issue?
Okay.
You're asking me who?
Yes.
All right, since you opened it up, Randy was trying to say something, and he agreed to be quiet. So Randy, this is your opportunity.
I know a lot of times you get 911 calls, and they say lifting assistance only. Would that qualify for this? And if so, do they charge for lifting assistance only?
Commissioner Walker, that would not qualify as a lifting assistance. Sir, that's a transport from a facility to home, and it is something that we don't do under our system. That's only for non-emergent ambulances that are franchised in the county. The county only provides 911 emergency services. Now, it's usually the EMS unit that's calling for lifting assistance, and usually that's a fire department coming to help our paramedics get a patient and get them to the hospital. So we don't deal in non-emergency transports.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Are we going to ask the representative to, on the hospital advisory board, to please ask the hospital for an explanation?
We've already asked. You take it up, you and Brian.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Once again, for the public's information, we allow people to speak for three minutes, public comments. It's not a question and answer. You know, we don't normally do what we're doing right now, and I'm doing it out of courtesy to you.
And I appreciate it.
You know, and I misunderstood, and I didn't do anything else, but I saw Chris and you talking, and I thought everything was kosher. But anyway, we got to move on. We're down to items for consent. Need a motion to approve those, or first of all, does anybody want to pull an item for consent?
Motion to approve.
Did you?
Yeah, as long as Chris is still here. I'd like to pull item five.
Okay, pulling item number five. Anyone else? All right, need a motion to approve the items for consent for further discussion on number five. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right. All those in favor of the items for consent, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we go ahead and pick that one up?
Yes, sure can. Chris, if you don't mind coming up, this is on the state capacity building competitive grant. That's on page 16 in your books, if you would like to turn there.
Yes, sir. You want to explain why?
Yes, yes.
Chris, I pulled this, not so much a question about this per se, but it talks about helping prepare for environmental issues and stuff. Can you update us on what happened on Highway 33 last week with the tanker that turned over and what went on? Because I've had any number of questions, they was prompted because of what happened in Ohio last fall.
Right. So that particular night was a single-vehicle accident, which was that transport truck that was carrying a loaded trailer, too nutrient to be unloaded. Something caused the accident. The driver was reporting that he struck a deer, ran off the shoulder of the road, and was just unable to maintain control. The vehicle rolled several times and came to a stop in the field. Significant damage to the truck, no damage to the container of the loaded vessel itself. So the first thing that is, I guess, a notable mention about this accident is the safety that goes into those transport containers. That container did exactly what it was supposed to do, take significant damage from a vehicle and not have a leak or rupture of anything like that. So that was the first notable piece there. Where it actually came to rest at was probably the most ideal location in our county to have something of that nature happen, because there were no homes in the area. If you all recall, that night was probably one of the coldest nights we've had in a very long time. It was miserable as responders to be at that accident. So anytime you're dealing with an accident involving those hazardous materials, that is not a quick response. That takes time, takes a lot of partnership or responding units from regional and state areas, and that's exactly what we triggered that night. So no leaks from the container. The driver was very fortunate that he wasn't even transported to the hospital that particular morning and stayed with us through the duration of the accident. So the largest piece of that response we had was having those state teams, those regional teams, come and assist us in our response. They essentially oversaw the transfer of the chemicals from that damaged trailer to a trailer that could be safely transported out of the area, and all those things take time.
What was the entire runtime of the event?
It was about 15 hours. We got notified around 11:30 that night. It's about 2 o'clock the following day before we left.
One of the positive things was the sheriff's office app. I'm looking for the right word.
That's it.
Okay. And they were updating, giving information, which I thought was really good.
And it's another one of those examples like we've shared in the past. There's a lot of moving pieces behind the scenes on our public safety responses nowadays, particularly when you're dealing with a hazmat incident. We had Williamson hazmat team here. We had members of Nutrients Response Team with us. We came out of the gate with, I believe, three fire departments responding, and we were able to quickly trickle that back once we found out what we had. Obviously, our law enforcement partners, and then, if you could imagine, a lot of shivering, people standing outside of a vehicle discussing, what are we going to do next, and what message do we need to send out, and how do we need to send those messages? So again, just the team... So, again, just the, the teamwork that goes on behind the scenes, partnerships that exist within this county, this was a great testament of it. Kudos to, 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 to the team at the office, because I had the easy part. I was, I was mainly on the phone talking, and these guys were doing what they do so well. And, and they have received recognition from the state on, on that response as well. So, a lot of moving parts behind the scenes on that accident.
Before you sit down, you got any questions on the agenda item?
No.
That you pulled?
No, I pulled, I, I pulled it because it talked about training and.
Make a, make a motion, make a motion.
I made a motion that we approve.
The grant, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of, of the grant, raise your right hand. Thank you, thank you, Chris. Okay, we're down to the approval of the E911 portable radio. Victoria.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The 911 Board gave all PSAs of the state an opportunity to apply for a 911 grant that would give portable radios to the comm center. The sheriff's office was able to secure that grant. With that being said, what we would get is it would approve for, for the purchase of four portable radios to stay at the seat count that they have for. So at each console, we would have a portable radio. They would cover the purchase, also getting those radios programmed and the maintenance. And this is just approval for that grant. It's 100% funded by the 911 Board.
So you've got a motion and a second discussion?
I have a question.
Yes. What do the four radios do for us? What advantage does the, the four radios give us?
Well, so if we ever come in an instance where our line was cut or we lost access to our radios, we would be able to pick up that handheld, the, the signal being cut from our console, that is. So, just for example, that, this past year, that actually happened. There was a line cut with CenturyLink, and we lost access from the Viper radios to our consoles. So what we were, and it would just affected the console. So we were able to get a handheld radio from our office staff. We were able to use it and communicate through the portable radio.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other question? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Next up, Mike. The patrol vehicle outfit of eight cars.
Yes, sir, I'm here tonight to seek approval for the purchase order that's attached. Four outfit, four Durango's, and four Chargers with money that's already in our budget.
As a matter of fact, it's 5,300 under the budget, according to my numbers. Is that sound right?
I'm not sure.
Second. Out of second.
I have a question.
Yes. The money that's already appropriated, is that the money that we appropriated for the SROs? Or is this coming out of the so-called regular budget?
It went into the regular.
It's the regular budget. The SRO money is still out there to be spent. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the fitting of the eight cars, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. We're down to the financial report. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. Haven't given you a financial update in several months. Thought it'd be a good time to do that. We've got seven months under our belt into the fiscal year. Got most of our tax money in, five months of our sales tax distribution. So a good time to take a look and talk about a mid-year review of our financials. So, starting with our first slide, we have a pie chart. You also have a copy in front of you in case some of these numbers get small on the screen. So this pie chart here that we have is actually showing our general fund revenues and the amount, the actual dollar amount and percent collected between the period of July 1st to January 31st, which is the first seven months of the fiscal year. So you'll see there at the bottom left of our chart that our total budgeted revenues for the year are right at $75 million. That's the amount of our general fund budget now, 75 million. If you go over to the right side of the chart, you can see as of January 31st, we've collected right at $50.3 million or 67% of that $75 million. And if you look at that chart there, you can see we've broken down by major category the percentage and the amounts that we've collected so far compared to the budget amount. So by far and large, property taxes make up our biggest revenue in the county. It's about 60%, it supports about 60% of our general operations. And we anticipated this year that we would collect about $39.2 million in property taxes, and we've already collected $36.1 million of that through January 31st. And that makes sense, because we send the bills out in August, as everybody knows. People wait and pay it about November, December, and January. So, we're right on track there with where we should be this time of year with our property tax collections. Our next largest revenue after our property taxes is our sales tax. And you can see that we collected right at $4.6 million or 31.6% of our sales tax. We budgeted $14.7 million in sales tax collections for the year. So we're only at about 32% collections or 4.6 million. And we're gonna dive, dive a little deeper into sales tax in a couple of slides down, because they, I think they finally have plateaued. We talked for months and months, even years, about just the incredible growth that we've seen in our sales tax over the last five or six years. And at some point, we were waiting for that shoe to drop. And I think we're finally seeing our sales tax starting to plateau. But we'll look at a graph on that a little deeper in just a few minutes. And then lastly, on this pie chart, we've got our third largest revenue there, which is our restricted intragovernmental revenue, kind of that pretty blue turquoise color. That makes up about 10% of our budget. And that is our, our state and federal grants to DSS and Health. And you can see that we've collected at this point $4 million, about 34.6% of that. And that might seem low to everyone, but that's completely normal. There's a lag in between the timing of when we receive those revenues, just like there is with sales tax. You got a two or three month lag, just because it's the federal and state government. And, you know, it takes them a while to get things done and get our money to us. So that's completely normal that we'd be at that, that percentage at this time of the year. Okay, so our next slide is a chart on our property tax billing. So like I said, property taxes, it makes up about 60% of our total revenues. Very important amount or number for us to keep looking at, making sure that we're hitting our budget numbers on that. And so, if we compare our 2023 levy billing to our 2022 billing, you can see that we did have a nice little bump, about $802,000 increase or 2.3% growth in our tax levy. Now, some of that is our, and I talked about this at our finance committee meeting in December. A lot of that is normal, just organic growth, where new homes are being built, people are doing additions to their homes, improvements to their properties. But a good half of this growth, we believe, in talking with the tax assessor, is where he's continuing to discover new values that have been missed in the past and doing some corrections and some current valuations. So, 2.3% growth in, in the tax levy from year to year, that, that's, that's pretty big growth. I know in our last valuation in 2018, I can remember the average growth over the eight years between 2010 and 2018 was nine tenths of 1%. So 1% would be more of a normal growth for us. So the fact that we had 2.3% growth or $801,000 from year to year, pretty good. Having said that, now remember, this is billing. So we bill $36.3 million for the tax levy. We consistently have a collection rate of about 98.6%. So I'm estimating that our collections for the whole year will be right at $35.8 million by the time we come to June. And we budgeted $35,686,000 was our budget number. So budgeted 35, right at 35.7, expected to come in at 35.8. So I'm looking at about $100,000 surplus on our tax revenues. That's pretty tight budgeting there, those numbers end up flushing out like I think they will. Okay, Brandon, the next slide, please. So, now we're shifting from looking at the billing to the actual collections. Just kind of wanted to compare where we're at, you know, seven months in the fiscal year at January 31st, what we've collected this year compared to last year. And you can see that we're about, what is it, $450,000 above where we were last year. This time last year, we're at 93.92% collected on the levy. This year, it's actually 94.7. So we're actually pacing a little ahead of collections where we were last year. So that's, that's a very good indicator as well. Okay, next, please. Okay, as I promised, I said we would look a little bit closer on the next two slides at sales tax, because this is a really big revenue for us, second largest revenue, as I mentioned earlier. We budgeted about $14 million in sales tax revenue for the year. Right now, we've collected right at $5.8 million, and that compares to $5.5 million at this time last year. So, again, that's what makes me think, you know, we've kind of reached a more leveling place or plateau on our sales tax. Still up slightly, it's only up about 1% when we look at the first five months of the year. But then again, we've got seven months to go, and we've still got our Christmas distribution to come in. So that could change slightly, but I do think that we're seeing a real slowdown in our sales tax. Okay, on the next slide, you got a graph of our sales tax over the last five or six years. And, you know, I mentioned the robust growth that we have enjoyed over the last five or six years. You can see back in 2019, our annual sales tax collections were only $9.8 million. We're almost at $14 million on our sales tax collections over that six-year period. You can see the growth percentages there at the right. I mean, we've enjoyed years during COVID, right after COVID, where we had 10% and 14% growth from year to year in our sales tax, which, you know, 10% growth on $14 million, that's 1.4 million extra dollars. That's a lot. That's over 2 cents on our tax rate. So, but there again, what we're seeing this year is just a, just a slight bump of 1%. So I don't think we'll hit our budget number on sales tax, but I'm not overly concerned about it. Because if you look at the next slide, which is interest earnings. Interest earnings right now are fabulous for the county. We do have a very healthy fund balance of about 45%, 30, probably 34 million dollars in general fund, fund balance. And I always say, you know, when interest rates are higher, as they are now, they're at a 22-year high. It's great when you got some cash in the bank, because you get, enjoy interest earnings. It's bad if you've got to borrow money. But as you can see, at that bottom there for 2024, in the first six months of the year, we're already at almost $2 million in interest earnings. Now, the Federal Reserve will meet in March, and they're not anticipated to reduce rates in March, but they are, the buzz is that there will be three rate decreases later in the year. So they will likely decrease rates, interest rates at their May meeting. Possibly, they meet every two months, July meeting and, what, September meeting? Did I say that right? Anyway, later in the month, May, July, and September. Yeah. Just got a history there. It fluctuates, you know, 2018, 277,000. I saw that going up. The Fed started cutting rates in 2020 when they were trying to curb the inflation during COVID, when all the money got flooded into the economy, and everything got red hot. They said, "Oh, my gosh, we got to raise interest rates." And you can see what happened to our interest earnings in 2021 and 22, when they cut rates down to nothing. I mean, that was the period of time when people like our manager was getting 2.5% mortgage rate. It was really wonderful if you're borrowing money then. But yeah, so, how long will it last? I don't know. We'll enjoy the interest earnings as long as we can, but they're gonna go back down. So the important thing for us, and I mentioned this also in our finance committee meeting, is when you've got such a volatile revenue as this, and you can see, I mean, you know, it's not that our balance in the bank has changed that drastically. We've always had a good fund balance since 2018. It's, it's directly tied to the interest rates. What we need to be careful of is not to build too much of a recurring expenditure in future budgets or expand a program based on $2 million worth of interest earnings that supports that program when it could go right back down to 277,000. And then you're looking at a tax increase to cover if that happens or losing the program. So those are just things we have to keep in the back of our mind while we're budgeting. Moving on to the next slide, this is a look at the expenditure side. Very small, I know, but you have the handout in front of you, that's better. Tried to fit it on all pages, but this is a snapshot of all of our departments within the general fund, and it shows you the original appropriation at July 1st, any budget transfer or changes or reallocations that we've done to increase or decrease that department's budget. Leaves you with the third column, which is their revised budget. It gives us the year-to-date amount for the first seven months of the fiscal year that they've spent, plus any outstanding POs or encumbrances. And then it shows an available amount, and then the last column shows the percentage that that department has used in the first seven months of their budget. So, I mean, I've gone through and looked line item by line item at all the departments. Every department looks like they're in reasonable shape. If you look in total at the very bottom right, you can see the general fund in total's at 57.7% spent on its budget. Well, the first seven months into the fiscal year, 7/12ths, it's 58%, so we're right where we need to be. Now, we'll point out one thing I did notice in the jail department of the sheriff's office, that their medical line where we have to treat inmates at, you know, the hospital or they have to be taken by ambulance to the doctor or facility for treatment, we are almost fully spent in that line item. And that's a $200,000 budgetary line. We spent $199,000. We got five months left to go. So I am anticipating that we're gonna have to shift around some funding to move down to pay for the remainder of the five months for medical for inmates. Will not have to be an appropriation of fund balance. We should be able to find some life salary money to cover that. So just heads up, you're gonna be seeing that coming before you in the coming months at a meeting to move some funding around for that. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, just real quick on water and solid waste. Water's a $9 million budget. Our revenues are right where they should be. They should be at 50% collected, not the 58%, because our billing is done in arrears by one month. So that 49.4%, right, just about where we need, expect to be at 50%. And then, you know, it's kind of seasonal, so I do believe we'll hit our revenue number there. Water expenditures at 3.4 million out of a $9 million budget, 45% spent. You might say, "Well, that's low, why so low?" We haven't made our debt payment yet. $2 million debt payment coming up in May and June for the revolving loans are in May. And the big $2 million payment for the limited obligation bonds will be due June 1st. So that would shoot that percentage right on up to where it needs to be. And then real quick on solid waste, we've got a $4.6 million budget for solid waste. The revenues are 80% collected, or 3.7 million. And that number's so high, because as you know, that fee is actually billed on the tax bill. So as people are paying their taxes in December, January, November, they're also paying that $185 annual fee. So we've already collected most of that. Did look at the billing for that. We did add, it, it does look like we added quite a little bit of revenue there. We did add, it does look like we added quite a little bit of revenue there as far as growth and the new homes bill and billing there. So I do think we'll hit our budget number. And then on solid waste expenditures, would expect them to be at 50% as well because we've only paid our contractor, Republic, six months. We haven't paid them for the seventh month yet, and we're at 45% spent there, so a little below on the expenditure side on the spending, which is great. It's always great when revenues are higher and expenditures are lower.
Anita Wu, what was the budget number again for solid waste? 4.6?
4.8.
4.8.
I'm sorry, 4.6. You're right.
4.6, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, Ed.
Going back to your sales tax, you got five months. Now, what was the last time that you got an estimate on this? Was it January?
We get our sales tax distribution information the first day of every month. So on February the 1st, the manager and I got an email, and it would have been for the November sales tax numbers.
Okay.
Because it's three months behind.
I follow, thank you. And another question I have, we are above, but you say you noticed that there's going to be a decline. What indicators, what indicators? We hadn't got Christmas, we hadn't got the summertime, we hadn't got vacation time. What indicators do you say that you can see this downturn?
We budgeted in like a, because we, if you look at the next slide, page six, if you look at the next slide, based on our percentage of growth that we had had over the last several years, the manager and I built in about a 5.5% increase in sales tax growth for this budget year compared to last year, and we're only going to probably have 1%. So we're not going to hit our budget number on what we thought we would collect in sales tax. But I'm not worried about it because I know we'll make up for it on the interest earnings. You're welcome.
Other questions of Anita? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anita. Next is the request for the refund of overpaid land transfer tax. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Page 133, you have a request from the Schoeff Law Firm where they inadvertently submitted a $3,030 land transfer fee when they recorded a document in the county. We unfortunately don't have that. There are some counties that have statutory authority to do a land transfer fee. We unfortunately don't, but they somehow inadvertently included that. General statute has a provision by which that gets refunded to them. They have to ask for it. The board essentially holds a hearing on it where they could come and speak and say, this is why we should get the refund. I think it's pretty clear this agenda item will act as your hearing. They have been notified, the law firm has been notified of this agenda item, and they've also taken corrective action by filing an instrument for incorrectly recorded documents, and they are eligible for this refund. So we would request your approval to return to them the $3,030 in a land transfer fee that they inadvertently included in their document.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Add a second discussion. No questions? We'll take a vote on it. All those in favor of the refund, raise your right hand. Thank you. The next item, Brian, is on the waterfowl hunting.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologies for it missing originally in the agenda. For some reason, it got missed in the program. Katie updated that, and you have it in front of you now. So we've received some concerns from residents regarding hunting waterfowl near residential areas. You'll see in the agenda item, there is a 1971 General Assembly session law that makes it unlawful to take, kill, or trap, or attempt to take, kill, or trap migratory wildfowl at any time north of the channel, the Pamika River, between Broad Creek and the city limits of Washington in Beaufort County. But there are residents who live outside those areas where hunters are in boats, and they've reported shooting back toward homes and getting sprayed, their roofs being sprayed with pellets. So actually, Mr. Travis Stevenson, who's actually here tonight, reached out and asked that the board might consider some work with the General Assembly or something on their own to address that issue. It's currently addressed in a portion of the county, just a residential safety issue. So he's here tonight, can address that, can speak to you about it if you'd like to have me speak. My one suggestion to you would be that if you decide to move forward with something, that we do it in conjunction with the General Assembly as maybe a local bill like this was done in 1971, simply because we don't, as the county, we don't have the resources to enforce essentially wildlife responsibility. And there is some statutes that don't allow you to infringe upon hunting rights in all the states, so we have to work very carefully on that to make sure we do it correctly.
Travis, would you like to add anything? If you do, please come up to the mic.
Yeah, I'll be glad to. So, and I appreciate Mr. Chairman and Brian adding me. I've been in Beaufort County about 15 years now, and a handful of you guys, and this has been an ongoing issue for that entire period of time. We, I live now, the Old Witch's Beach campground, other side of the river, outside of the buffer here on this side of the river. It's gotten worse over the past four, five years. I've worked in conjunction with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission for two terms on their outdoor heritage advisory council when they formed that, which was really about creating opportunities for kids to hunt, more public areas to hunt. I want to be careful, we don't do anything in opposition of that, but in some of my diligence in gathering information and our email exchanges and trying to figure out the best way to go forward, working with Kyle Briggs, who's the chief deputy director of the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, talking to several of his officers, just trying to make sure things we were talking about were in line with what they thought were enforceable and smart and safe. So what I had put together was ideas from other counties. None of them are necessarily original faults. They're things that have been done, are being done. There are neighboring counties that have laws in place, and we discussed them, that I don't agree with, I don't think that are great ways to use the public waters because they're very, very limiting. Again, I'm sharing an opinion, but we get an opportunity to look at what we're doing as a county, and I think the state would support it. We talked about enforceability, I wish Scott would have stayed. We have zero wildlife officers assigned to Beaufort County right now. Zero. So when we have things in place like the Landowner Protection Act, which requires signs at certain yardages, purple paint at certain yardages, they are not only hard to enforce but hard to understand. And in a situation where if somebody's hunting or fishing or trapping where they're not supposed to, then we've got to have resources to go out and measure signs and measure paint on trees, and it becomes really not only hard to enforce, but secondly, if you don't have it just right under the Landowner Protection Act, it actually opens a door to say, I can hunt on your private property because you've got a sign out of place, as opposed to a simple written permission law by landowners. If you're owning private property, you have written permission to do it. It is that simple. Then the Sheriff's Department and a lot more agencies can work to enforce it. It is, if you're hunting on private property, you have written permission from the owner. It's done in a bunch of counties. Secondly, the other piece that Brian mentioned is, like is on this side of the river, our side of the river and other places, we can't legislate our common sense sadly, so people will, because they can, by law, public trust waters hunt within 20 yards of homes, and they're doing it. Three situations within a mile, excuse me, a mile, one of the sergeants who lives close but doesn't work in Beaufort County for the commission has been called to 10 or 12 in Beaufort County this hunting season. So it's just an issue, and it's a big safety concern. I don't know, we've got a lot of different things we could consider. I think it needs to start small if the commissioners decide to pursue it. And so there's just a smart, reasonable buffer to hunt public waters from a residence, 50, 75 yards, maybe 100 yards, which is just common sense so that people aren't just creating very unsafe hunting environments. And it doesn't rule out waters that should be hunted anyway, because people shouldn't be hunting that close on public land. So that's the two, and I don't know if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to stay or try to answer them because I've done more work than I typically do.
Before we have any, take any kind of actions, anybody got a question, Travis?
I have a question.
All right.
Does Beaufort County supersede the City of Washington ETJ areas? Do you know that, since you've had, done some work in this area? How many of you guys know?
Meaning just city limits ordinance?
Yeah, well, the ETJ is beyond city limits. I guess there might be a barrier there that could have some significance between the ETJ and the city limits.
Isn't that a wildlife commission? I mean, aren't they responsible for the waterway?
So ETJ description or enabling for the city that gives them authority over hunting other than the keeping of animals in the city limits? So, yeah, ETJ becomes somewhat irrelevant because it's not there, which is...
So pretty much you can't hunt within the city limits, even with the water, you know, with the city limits of the water.
Well, let me weigh in on that. I've had complaints in the last two months, and my office is on the second floor downtown, and many mornings, I'm sitting there early in the morning, and it really sounds like they're trying to kill ducks down on Water Street. It's quite loud. And then I've had complaints from people out in the Tar Heel Drive vicinity on the other end of town about people firing guns and shooting within a few feet of houses. So, you know, there's a problem with this, and I don't think we should rush into anything tonight. I'd just like to see us say that we're going to study it for a while and let the attorney pull some laws together, or the manager, and let's see what other counties are doing, and then let's go back at this because it is a problem. I don't see how people down on Main Street put up with the noise that I hear in my office.
You should move to my side of the river.
Do it, do it. There can't be any ducks out there all the time.
Well, here's the thing, I'm an avid hunter, I'm going to be on the record of not bringing these things up here, and I happen on a farm down on North Creek in Beaufort County. I have done exactly what I had to do to enforce trespassing based on the Landowner Protection Act, and it's a good time of year to start the conversation. It is safety probably first, don't overreach so that we shrink public waters, public land, and that was a good part of the dialogue that started early on here. But we are, in my opinion, and based on what I'm hearing from law enforcement officers, we don't have what we need in place. And there's something smart and relatively simple to do as a good starting point, and that hopefully we won't have to increase enforcement or make it any more stringent over time. And when you get down that road, of course, Mr. Chairman and Brian, y'all know that I'll be glad to help bird dog anything I can and help any way I can.
Well, I've talked to two avid duck hunters, and they all agree with Travis. Something needs to be done, and we have one existing law on the books that was done in 1971, and we probably, you know, that affects from Broad Creek to the Trussell.
To the, yeah. Everything north of the channel.
Right.
Which is, you know, that blocks out probably 3,000 acres of public waters, and it was a quick fix, and it's one of those things that I think the commission will, if we get it right for the county, we'd probably repeal that, open up some more water, but it's hard to turn back.
Do we, do we need a motion, or is everybody in agreement that we, everybody in agreement that we, that we move forward to try to come up with some language that we can send to our representative to do a local bill?
I don't have a problem with what you're trying to do, but I want you to talk to some people like the wildlife officer, you know, the Howard Patrol and sheriff, they would tell you, they don't know it, they don't know wildlife law.
Travis?
Yeah, no, totally agree. Again, Kyle Briggs, chief deputy director, and he gave me three guys down east, they will, and they will participate in whether it's a committee, a subcommittee, it's a meeting, they want to be involved, and to Brian's earlier point, we need them involved because they will help us be successful on Jones Street with something that we're not trying to do, that they're going to say is unenforceable, too overly restrictive to hunting rights. We don't want to do any of that. We're in Beaufort County. I mean, it's hard to not complain about gunshots, but I don't complain about those or hurricanes, that's where we live, but just what I guess.
Well, unfortunately, what we're dealing with here is not the average hunter.
You're right.
Who respects the people of the community, et cetera. The people that we're talking about are the people that do not respect their neighbor and that do take advantage and do do things that they should not do, and these are people we need to be going after.
If you're talking about fins, feathers, or fur, as they say, anything wildlife or fishing related, it gets extremely emotional. This shouldn't be. This is like, we should be able to come up with some pretty common sense stuff and all that's comments, since you said it first, Mr. Chairman, I'll say go heels.
You don't want me to change my opinion, do you? Right, is there anything else that you need?
Yes, I think we're good. We'll start working forward.
Okay, thank you very much. We pulled number one, we're down to supporting youth athletes, Commissioner John, Revolt.
During my visits out with constituents, especially even lately, there's been, I've been getting questions about what the county's role should be, and I think most people are thinking that that would be more, but what the county's role should be in encouraging youth participation in athletics and ensuring that there's opportunities for them to be involved. You got to read what I wrote up for this in terms of all the impact, positive impact athletics has on children and our youth, and so I just wanted to open this up to discussion. Do you think we ought to be trying to do more? And if so, what would that look like? Well, and I... And I know right now, this is largely a city function. The county's not really involved other than what we've done to increase some funding, improve our assistance to the metropolitan areas that have the infrastructure already in place to create the programs. But the county youth, if they're involved in athletics, they're involved in the metro, the city's programs. So anybody want to comment?
Well, during the last budget, we did increase the funding to, I think it was Bath, Bellhaven, Chaco, Winerty, who are missing, Aurora, Washington, to the ones that had active sports. We didn't, we didn't cut out the other municipalities, but they got less, so.
But the people I'm hearing from think that, they're raising the issue, I think, because they think we ought to be doing some additional to ensure that there's programs available to their kids.
Well, during the last 15 years, you know, the schools have gotten more support, the athletic programs in the schools, because the board backed off of funding, of giving funding for athletic programs, football fields, tracks, et cetera, et cetera. So in the last 10 years, to my knowledge, there's a lot more support within the public school system than what there has ever been on athletic programs, so.
I think it's something that we should look at. I mean, kids, it's not a function, and I don't want to get in function that the county have a recreation. Some counties do have it, and they contribute a lot to it. I mean, it's a big item, but I think it's something that we should look at and have a discussion about and see what can we do to do some more funding.
Any, any other comments?
I'll just have one.
Yes.
We're about to have a planning session.
Right.
And we can talk about it.
Yeah. Okay, item number three, Civil War trails missing signed update, Commissioner Walker.
This is something I've been working on myself, it doesn't require any actions.
This is something I've been working on myself, it doesn't require any actions, just knowledge. Several months ago, I was approached by a county resident who wishes to remain nameless and he was concerned about the missing Civil War marker that detailed the Battle of Trener's Creek west of Washington. Now, these markers from the Civil War series highlight Civil War battles and events that took place in the area. I think Beaufort County has four or five of these around. There are two markers on Water Street and I see people reading them all the time. Civil War tourism is very popular. The Battle of Trener's Creek took place June 3, 1862. It involved over a thousand troops and the Gunboat Picket was involved in the action. The Gunboat Picket was right over there and sunk just to the west of the bridge. So the Picket, or the Union troops came out of Washington and the Confederate troops came out of Pitt County. And during the battle, a Union Colonel was killed in action and he was later awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. So I reached out to the Civil War Trail folks and I am awaiting a response. And I did receive that they got my inquiry. So it eventually might take, require a resolution, not only from Beaufort County, but Pitt County, since it happened right there on the border. And I will seek that if needed. So, you know, local history must be preserved, no matter how unpleasant it may be. And we must learn from history so we don't make the same mistakes of the past.
Anybody want to add anything?
Well, this particular program, why don't you just send an email to those people and then ask them to replace the sign? Somebody paid $3,000 to become a member of that group.
That's exactly what I did.
Okay. All right. This fits well with your vote to take down the Civil War monument at Arlington Cemetery in Washington DC. So I guess you're politically covering yourself.
Okay, we'll go to item number five, the Health Department Providing Primary Care, Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, primary care.
Yes.
Well, you know, there's, there's a move, all of this business about providing Medicaid assistance and the most expansion of Medicaid and all that.
No problem.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And all of that requires some discussion and this may have been a discussion that ultimately is better had during the budget session. And the Health Department is moving and advertising toward providing more and more primary care. They're training, I understand, more people who can service primary care at the Health Department. And one of the questions I have is, what is the definition of primary care? And how deep do we want to get into this? Considering that we have a medical university, we have a hospital, we have plenty of doctors in the Greenville, Beaufort County area. And it, and it's, it's something that if we got into it, could balloon into a big expense for the county. There's medical liability here. Yes, the Health Department has been providing some primary care for people for some time and they've been providing it without a vote of the county commissioners in order to do that. And this is a, this is something that's going to grow by administrative fiat without the commissioner's involvement, if we allow it. And I have some questions as to whether, how deep the county wants to get into providing medical primary care to anybody.
Yes. You asked what the definition of primary care is, but what, what did the, the board that you sit on come up with?
I never ask them.
Okay.
Because I'm a commissioner. We fund that board.
You're at that board?
No, we fund that board. This is an, this is a, a funding issue. They cannot fund themselves. We fund the board, provide them with a budget. This is something that we as commissioners are responsible for, not the Board of Health. They carry out whatever we direct them to do and whatever the state law directs us to do is what we do.
Well, I thought they would have a voice in what, what it is they're providing. So I thought you'd know that.
Well, that's why I'm raising the issue. I don't think we do know as a board about this and what the implications of it are and how far it can go and how much it can cost the county, because you can have reversals in the way medical care is provided. And all of a sudden, the county's sitting here on the hook for providing a lot of care for people that the taxpayers don't really need to be providing. Don't forget, we've got an intricate federal system of Medicaid, Medicare, of funding for care. And we had a hospital that we gave to somebody else so they could provide the care. So why do we need, as a public health department, to be providing private health services? Public health is a health that affects the public, not your grandmother, not me. You're to provide that for yourself as an individual. And I don't want to see, I don't want to see us grow more and more into providing health care when we don't need to.
Janelle, did you raise your hand?
I was just going to answer questions.
Please, please come up.
Just that you have the opportunity to respond.
Sure. So I did Google and it says healthcare, primary care is healthcare at a basic rather than specialized level. So with us providing primary care, I just want to start off by saying, originally we had one FNP. So we started off contracting her. We were sharing her with another county health.
Janelle, family nurse, explain.
Oh, I'm sorry, acronyms, family nurse practitioner. I do speak in an alphabet soup sometimes, I apologize. But as an FNP, we then started to see a greater need. We weren't primary care, but we had more and more patients with sick visits or things of that such that our hands roll nurses were not able to take care of. So we brought her on board full time and then also, as you know, she helped in the jail and helped with that aspect. And then our certified nurse midwife, a couple of years ago, when the previous health director was here, mentioned to him that she wanted to go back to pursue her FNP. So she went there without the county's support. We didn't provide any funding for that education or anything of that such. In this December, she officially graduated. She achieved her FNP, which is what, family nurse practitioner license. Sorry, I'm sorry. And then February, we did start promoting quote unquote, primary care. But the services that we are providing, nothing has changed. We have a malpractice insurance, as we always have, and even that insurance doesn't change with the title, primary care. Everything of that such stays the same. Why we went into primary care is because there is a need in our county. We continually, in the hospital, I had some people from the hospital literally hug me. They were so excited that we were offering primary care and it's not to compete with other providers, it's to provide a home, medical home for our citizens of Beaufort County. What we know with primary care is just like you guys, if you have a primary physician, you have a rapport with that provider. If we have clients that don't have a medical home, they're going to the ER, they're going to the ED, that we're, and we see that now even. And with the Health Department, unlike some other facilities, we are able to offer services on sliding fee scales. Yes, we accept all the insurance and all that stuff as well. But we are trying to provide that medical home for prevention purposes. Public health is prevention and primary care is prevention too. We want to meet someone when they have a fever early on, not later on where we find out it's an infection and then that's when they get in the ED and the E D and all that stuff. So that is where we kind of came about with primary.
All right, Commissioner Langley. So basically what you're saying is, is your goal to try to catch those who fall through the track, cracks. And the other thing is that they don't have to wait until after 5 o'clock to go to the ED, that they can go ahead and get treatment during the day.
Yes. So with those cracks, a lot of people turn away from Medicaid or some of those payment sources and we don't. So we do tend to be a medical home for individuals that have been turned away elsewhere. Plus providers here, I pulled our most recent rate, which was presented to the Board of Health as well. But the current last county rate that we had for providers was one provider averaged seeing 2,136 patients a year. The 2030 healthy Carolina rate, or the goal rate for us, is 1,500. So we're almost double that. And what that does is for a provider, they get overwhelmed or they're at capacity, which a lot of our offices locally, even some in Greenville are seeing, you can't get in right away because they're maxed out or you, they're not taking new clients and that's such. So we were just trying to add a medical facility that individuals would be comfortable coming seeking their care. The other thing that I'll just add that hasn't changed, like I said, the providers, whether we're primary care or not, as a family nurse practitioner, they are able to diagnose, prescribe and all that stuff. That hasn't changed with the title, primary. What did change is to be considered primary, we now offer more availability for like our employee health or walk-ins because those urgent care needs, minimal, not urgent, urgent care, for walk-ins that we're able to see them. And then also, we're able to, excuse me, we're also able to develop those relationships again with these clients that if, if you had a provider and you've never seen them before and you have this whole list of history, there's going to be a lot more things that go into that. Or you see mismanagement medication because they didn't know this provider prescribed that. That medical home or that primary care also helps it stem that where individuals are better related to their patient's care.
Just, just one comment as it relates to primary care. When Congressman Murphy was here with the three other people from the House of Representatives doing a hearing on healthcare, we were in Bell Haven and the newest doctor in Bell Haven told the group that he has, he, he's the only one, to my knowledge, that can still accept new patients. And he was accepting a new patient from Pitt County and he had one all the way from Virginia.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that, and, and these are people, both of those are people that have retired and moved into the area. And when they call, the doc, the office says, we're not taking on any new patients. I mean, these are people that have, you know, supplemental insurance as well as, as Medicare.
Yeah. Our, my goal and public health's goal is always to provide whole person care. Now, that's extremely difficult because we are extremely difficult people, teeth, mouth, brains, everything. But with some of the expansion things that we have put in place without county dollars, the funding that provided a behavioral health through grant funding, we're able to provide that and that's at capacity. She's at a full caseload. We cannot increase access anymore. And I have a feeling our providers are going to be there soon, but hopefully we're, again, finding people in those cracks and filling that gap that's available.
Did you, did you have a comment, Brian? Any, any commissioner? Thank you very much.
Is there a measurement that tells us when we're getting to the point where it's breaking apart?
Capacity wise? Some of that's based on providers. We do not have a number right now. I know for certain clientele, for like our MAT, we're at 20 and that is our max because of the detail that goes in for that medication, assisted therapy treatment. They're very particular and special clients.
Okay, you and I talked by email about mental health.
Yes.
Are we not able to, to take care of those referrals?
So we are. So our policy right now, what we're doing, because she is at about 95, that is a left over the caseload of what she should be. What we do is we have basically an assistant that goes through weekly. And if we have patients that are no showing or consistently rescheduling, we're following back up with them so that we can remove them from our caseload and immediately put in people that's on our waitlist. So that's our policy right now.
Okay.
But the mental health provider that's paid for by a grant?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item is the School Board Meeting Discussion, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I got this notice that the Secretary or Superintendent of Public Education is going to be in Washington this coming, is it Wednesday afternoon?
Wednesday afternoon.
For the purpose of which is to meet with a joint meeting of this Board of Commissioners and the School Board about the grant to build the mega school. And I'm wondering, is this a normal procedure? I mean, why are we doing this? Why is this special? Well, other than she's running for office again.
Representative Keith Kidwell called me as well as the Chairman of the School Board and said that she was going to be in Beaufort County and that she would like to meet with a joint group of both boards. And so both of us told Representative Kidwell, we would try to put that together and that's how the ball got started and why we're having the special call meeting.
Well, it's a special call meeting, there is a purpose for the meeting, so I'm wondering, nobody's ever said what the purpose for the meeting is.
It's, it's to, what we were told, it was to discuss the grant.
So we're going to discuss the grant and the elements of the grant at, at the special call meeting with School Board.
As far as I know, that's the only, that's the purpose of our meeting was to, was to hear her.
Who's driving the agenda then?
Well, it's, it's nothing but on that, on the, on the grant. I don't know whether she's got questions of us as it relates to the grant. And we're, we're up against, I think, we're fairly close to the deadline for them making a decision on who's going to get them for this year, so.
So we'll be able to question her about her methods of, of, you know, of awarding a grant and about how she views public education and neighborhood schools versus these mega schools and.
Well, here, here again, she's on the schedule, so we're going to have limited time. And so I would assume we're going to let her start the discussion, whatever she's got to say, and then it'll be opened up for both boards.
Okay, well, this is, there's going to be a problem with me if she comes in, spends 15 minutes talking to us and walks out.
Well, it might be a problem for you, but we're trying to accommodate the state superintendent and our representatives. So if you want to walk out after 15 minutes, that's your prerogative.
No, you're suggesting that I do something. I don't know what I'm going to do after 15 minutes.
Well, that's fine.
But, you know, I, I, I do, if we're having a joint meeting, I'm a member of one of the boards that's summoned to this meeting, expect to be able to ask questions of her.
We'll see.
No, we won't see. Don't show up if you're not going to answer questions from the board members.
Okay, you want to, you want to go to Chaco Innerty embezzlement case discussion?
Well, what's the latest from the manager and the finance officer on the Chaco Innerty embezzlement case? Do you, do you all have anything to report?
Do not have anything to report. What I know is what you probably know that's been reported in the media. We're not privy to those inside conversations because we're not with law enforcement.
Well, has the county been approached in any way, shape, manner or form with questions or a request for information about funds that we might have given?
It is my understanding of the tax, the tax assessor and collector have been asked some questions about funds flowing over to the town of Chaco Innerty. So yes.
Well, that's sort of asking the wrong people, aren't they? Well, I guess they collect and disperse through our, through the county, those particular funds. We only disperse funds that we've actually collected to those agencies, right?
That's correct. We, we actually do that on a, on a 1/12 basis for the fire and EMS and then we shorten, then we, we close up and we round and we true up. We true up at the end of the year to make sure that it's right.
Okay, so you're the, the agencies that they, that we collect for our EMS and the fire departments?
We collect for EMS, fire, and we also collect the taxes for the town of Chaco Innerty.
Right.
And submit those to them.
So, but we have been questioned about that and asked to provide information on the amounts and I guess when the dispersments were made.
That's my understanding, but the, the assessor and the collector posted that they had some inquiries.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take our 15 minute break and then we'll come back. Thank you, Brandon. We're, we're back from the recess. We're down to item number eight, Resolution in Defense of the State of Texas, Commissioner Stan Etheridge.
My resolution to, my, my resolution in defense of the state of Texas, the people's sovereign right to defend its southern border, which is the entire title, is based upon what is going on right now. It would take someone who is blind, deaf, totally out of sync with everything that is happening in America today, in the world, to not witness what is happening on our southern border. Now, we have a problem on our northern border and I think you guys are going to address that later. But our southern border is where the crux of the American evasion of 2023, now 2024 is occurring. What began as a problem during the Obama administration and was corrected to some large extent during the Trump administration, quickly became a crisis during the Biden administration because he decided to stop all of the executive orders. because he decided to stop all of the executive orders that Donald Trump had enacted and was working and following up, began building a wall even against the extreme displeasure of a Democratic Senate and House. Still, he figured a way to start the wall. The wall, a lot of it got built. What did not get built was stopped and that, that, the materials have been, now been sold for scrap. Right now, we are forecasting close to 8 million people that have come into this nation since Biden has been present. Projections are for far more before he leaves. There are people coming to this nation that are known terrorists. There are tens of thousands and maybe hundreds of thousands of people in the last two years alone that are military aged. We don't know who they are, where they are, not to mention the drugs coming across the border, specifically fentanyl, and the sex trafficking that's coming across the border. 85,000 children are missing. Now, at one time, when Donald Trump was president, there was a, a great outcry over the people putting cages, the cages that Obama built. Now those children, it would have been nice if they were in cages, so-called cages, because now they're missing. They're gone, somewhere in our nation. Who knows what's being happened? So I've written this resolution and it's somewhat strident, but I will tell you, my, my constituents are, are very angry right now. Texas is very angry. Texas, we're, we're in a boiler, an inflection point that is boiling. And if you watch closely, the people in Texas are getting pushed to a point that they may do something that will be in complete conflict with our federal government. And we don't need that. We've had one civil war. We don't need to begin a second one over this. So my, my resolution is to show that we are in complete solidarity with Texas. I mean, when you look at all the southern states and you look at all the governors that are lending help, money, National Guard, whatever it takes, you look at North Carolina, we're the only southern state that's not involved. So my idea is for us to pass this and send this to all the people in the General Assembly, the governor, and our delegation in the House and Senate of the United States Congress. So without any further ado, I will read this. Resolution in defense of the state of Texas and their people's sovereign right to defend its southern border. Whereas the southern state of Texas has long depended upon the United States government to defend their southern border with Mexico, since the free people of Texas, an independent country since 1836, sought annexation to become the 28th state of the United States and 1845. And whereas the independent nation of Texas did enjoy a sovereign border when it joined this constitutional republic, thus expecting the continued and preserved validity of the United States Constitution, which does hereby prescribe and guarantee in Article Four, Section Four, that the United States government guaranteed to every state in this union a republican form of government and shall protect each of them against invasion and on application of the legislature or of the executive when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence. And whereas the United States of America, a victim of the Biden-Harris administration's wide-open southern border policy, in particular, has openly encouraged by policy financed by the People's Treasury while working in conjunction with and as an accessory to other nefarious business and political components to foment, encourage, and create a full invasion of illegal aliens into the United States of America, primarily through the wide-open southern border of Texas, precisely due to certain prime purposes known best and only by the non-patriot left, a group of treacherous fools who manage and manipulate the 46th President of the United States. And whereas North Carolina is not a state continually controlled by the ignoble political interests of the non-patriot left and furthermore, has enjoyed many fundamental kindred ideals with the state of Texas for centuries, a kinship of ideals existing from the historical standing point that many of Texas founding settlers were immigrants originally from North Carolina. And whereas, when recently intuitively, 25 governors of freedom-loving states swore an allegiance of support and defense of the Texas southern border, a sovereign barrier of which the Biden-Harris administration's wide-open southern border policy became demonstrably in conflict with the firm reality regarding what constitutes sovereign borders. Henceforth, the inarguably proposed, promoted, planned, and public-financed Biden-Harris policy to instigate and continue unabated the invasion of this constitutional republic was inalterably afoot as a damaging agent upon our intrinsically woven societal fabric, a surrender to the inane of political ignorance rather than the imperative of a patriotic necessity. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners do respectfully request the governor of North Carolina shall hereby pledge North Carolina's support for the sovereign right of the state of Texas to defend its southern border. And since North, Beaufort County, NC, is rapidly becoming a border county due to the federal government's institutionalized neglect, Beaufort County's commissioners do also request that the governor provide any and all interdictive support reasonably requested by the state government of Texas to aid in stemming this overwhelming and planned invasion affecting the sovereign security of Texas and similarly of North Carolina, both too important to surrender to this treacherous invasion constructed entirely of an evil ambition.
Do you make, did you, I missed it if you made a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Okay. And a second. Any discussion?
Well, yes. You, you have submitted a resolution concerning America's borders, which if I read this board correctly, you're going to try to vote down Stans.
Well, we got, we, no, we got this one on the floor right now.
I know, but I'm, I'm addressing this one, if you don't mind.
That's, that's, that's my interpretation.
You can't tell me what to say. Let's understand that.
We're going to take a vote.
No, no. I have a right to address this resolution as everybody on the board does.
Okay.
I have a right to address this political situation that you're trying to maneuver here.
Go ahead and address it.
Okay. So there's another resolution that's going to be approved just as soon as Frankie and his boys vote this one down. Stan's resolution goes to the forcing the governor or pushing the governor, we can't force him to do anything, pushing the governor into supporting 25 other states as far as the border is concerned. The other resolution goes to the President of the United States, the House and the Senate. I'm proposing that we vote for both of them. And if Stan's resolution passes, then I will vote for the resolution that Mr. Waters has proposed. If you vote down Stan's resolution, keep in mind, Waters' resolution is directed to the President of the United States. It protects the governor of North Carolina. Stan's resolution goes to the governor of North Carolina and the other resolution goes to the President and the House and the Senate. So I support both of them if both of them are passed. If Stans fails, I'm not going to vote for Frankie's.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And I'm going to say this, I, I don't care whose resolution it is, I'm, I'm not going to vote for neither one. I mean, the whole problem with the border is the folk in Washington, DC. You have a Democratic Senate who passed a bipartisan bill and now the House says that it is dead on arrival. And so that is the problem with our border. Until politicians, elected officials learn to stop playing party politics, we're never going to accomplish anything. Everybody knows that we have a problem at our border, but the thing about it is, nobody really wants to do anything about it. Everybody just simply wants to point fingers one at another. It is time for us to stop these resolutions and demand that the folk in Washington, DC, do their jobs.
I had not talked to Hood Richardson about this before this, we came here, but that, that was going to be my strategic plan as well. You vote for this, this passes, I'll vote for yours. That's the only way I'll vote for it. Now, Jerry, I got a question for you. What part of the new bipartisan legislation is going to solve the problem?
Well, I'm, I'm, please, please direct it specifically.
No, I'm going to direct it specifically to you.
No, 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 no.
No, no, it doesn't do with that legislation.
Well, I'm not answering you. Okay. So you don't have an answer? Okay. You just made a statement, a, a declaration, and you're saying you have no answer to a simple question?
Anyone else, anyone else want to say anything as it relates to the resolution about Texas?
I do have one more thing.
I mean, it's, it's.
Whether this passes or not, I will send this to every county commissioner group. I will send it to every legislator. I will send it to our delegation. I will do it on my own. I'll provide other, other information I can find or this video would be a great thing to provide. And I want them to know that there are some people here that do support what, doing what's right. And what's happening in Texas right now, where they have installed tremendous amounts of razor wire and where they have put up a makeshift fence, is working. It is working. Okay.
Yes, it, yes, it is working. You're getting people drowning, babies.
No, 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 that's, that's.
I got it. I didn't interrupt you. Now sit down and hush. Another thing about it, you said that you're either blind or deaf. I want to be blind and deaf to hear that bull mess that you're talking. I would have seen any kind of Latino, Mexican, anybody. I would have had 5,000 that have one stand districts.
Okay. We're going, we, we, we're going to, we're going to take a vote on the resolution in defense of the state of Texas and their people's sovereign right to defend its southern border. So all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Because I got challenged by some of the people that support me when this came up before and I said, well, if he comes up again, I'll come up with a resolution. I, I'm a simple person and I'm around simple people and I'm looking at it from a different perspective. Wherefore the county commissioners of Beaufort County are charged with protecting its citizens, the county's governing board is deeply concerned with fentanyl and other deadly drugs coming across America's northern and southern borders. And whereas the commissioners support the rights of border states to protect and defend its citizens from illegals crossing the borders within their states, and whereas commissioners are not opposed to legal immigration under existing federal laws, and now therefore, to get resolved, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners urge the President of the United States, the US House of Representatives, and the US Senate to use both their executive orders and congressional legislation to close blood, close both its southern and northern borders of Mexico and Canada until new immigration laws are passed. Adopted this the 5th day of February 2024, so I make that motion. Second. And we have a second.
I have a question.
Yes.
What, what is your goal with this resolution? In exact terms and descriptive terms, what is your goal?
Well, I, I think that my role as a county commissioner is to worry about things that affect Beaufort County's citizens. And what I'm trying to say and what I realize, staying in my lane, that no vote and no resolution that we do here is going to affect what happens on the southern border. What, what I'm asking is I'm asking the President and the House of Representatives and the Senate are the ones that make the law and they have to get along and they have to come up with a plan. It's not one-sided. It's got to be done by both parties and it's got to be done by the people in Washington, DC, not by the Beaufort County commissioners. But because I've got people that say you should be opposed to it, I'm a, they should close the borders until they get it passed.
Get what passed?
Until they get federal legislation passed. Close the border until it's.
Are you saying that in exact terms?
That's the goal. That's the goal. It's pretty simple.
It's not simple. It's going to be complicated at some point.
Well, I'm sure you'll make it complicated.
No, no, I don't.
But it's, you make it complicated.
No, this, this is not between me and you. I'm just asking you questions. You've made a declaration.
Yeah.
It's very unspecific. There's no meat to it whatsoever. I mean, it's, it's pablum. I'm asking you to put some meat to it. I mean, if you, you say you're a simple man and you have simple friends.
Yes.
Are you saying your friends are simpletons? Because this really is a simpleton resolution.
Well, I, I'm not going to get you support, you're not going to vote for it, so I, I would just, I would just say that you just.
You don't want to explain yourself to the people. Now, when I do the.
I'm already explaining to the people. It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple.
You said close the borders. You voted for keeping the borders open for years. Now all of a sudden it's gotten bad enough for you to, to close the border? I hear how many times you voted to keep the, the border open? You've told me personally, you have friends that hire these people. You're not going to vote to close the border. You've told me that and I get that. You, you represent the democratic socialist side. I get it. Now, I call it non-patriot left at this point with what's happening in America, but, and we do have this difference. Now, I'm just asking you some specific questions. I would like some specific answers. What part of the legislation is going to make the difference? You said, close the border until there's legislation passed. What legislation?
Specifically? Federal, immigration.
Exactly. What part of that? That's, this gets complicated.
Yeah, I understand. I understand you wouldn't, we don't have time to go there. You worry about your constituencies and I worry about mine.
You said in the very beginning, it made no difference in Beaufort County. Do you not understand that 60% of all illegals get on welfare? Do you not understand it costs $11,000 to $12,000 per, per year for Beaufort County citizens to pay for an illegal child to be educated?
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say?
I have a second.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's not going to be complimentary, Mr. Chairman. What your resolution does is gives aid and comfort to the governor of North Carolina and takes the state of North Carolina out of the fight which 25 other states have joined, which will get the legislation change that you're talking about. It is pablum. It does nothing except maybe make you look good with your buddies, so, and that's fine with me. I'm not voting for it.
Well, that's fine. I didn't expect either one of you guys to vote for it. So anyway.
All vote for it.
Yeah. You, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor of this resolution concerning America's borders, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
I am on this one. I will not vote for any Republican initiative that does no good whatsoever.
Okay. We're down to closed session and Katie or David, you want to read us into the closed session?
A motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 143, 31811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to go into closed session. Need a motion, I'm sorry, need a motion to go in closed session.
Don't move.
Second. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Need a motion to come out of closed session. Second, and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I, there's no action taken during the closed session. We're down to the last item. Anyone want to add any additional comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand of adjournment. Thank you.